Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're going to begin tonight with a public hearing on the short-term rental ordinance. To participate in public audience or any public hearing, there are two ways. You can send an email to townmanager@simsbury-ct.gov to have it read, or you can register to join us in person and speak to us over Zoom. So the short-term rental ordinance, a tiny bit of background. This ordinance would regulate the local market for short-term rentals on sites such as Airbnb by creating a permitting process. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it there. I wanted to just quickly see if either Jackie or Chris, who served on the work group, wanted to add anything in the way of context before we go to people's comments. Okay?
All right.
I'm happy to hear people's comments and then we can chime in, right, Chris?
Yeah, we have an agenda item under Selectman Action where we can, we can discuss further. So I'll begin with, I see we have, it looks like Joan is still connecting to audio. I hope I'm not mispronouncing your name. Is it Barry Rami? Do we have Barry? That doesn't look like we do yet. Joan, do we have you? I don't hear you. I think you're on mute. Not yet. Nope.
Okay, here.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, you can go ahead, please.
Comments to the short-term rentals?
Yeah, we'll start with a short-term rental and then we'll do public audience a little bit later.
Okay, thank you so much. Joan Co., 26 Wickham Drive. After reviewing the short-term rental ordinance, I found some omissions that should be included. Airbnb has many contracts for rentals and private residence for long-term or short-term rentals with agreements with the prospective renters and property owners. The town ordinance should define the permitting process for Airbnb rentals. Will the homeowner of Airbnb rental agreement be required to apply for a town permit? Will the authorized enforcement agency of employees or designated of the town as designated by the town manager to enforce the ordinance have the ability to have immediate access to online data of permits from the town? The town should have a policy that no permit should be approved if the homeowner has unpaid taxes. The tax department should share a list of all unpaid taxes to the building department on a regular basis. And that's my input for the short-term rental. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. I know another member of the public was going to join, but I'm not seeing him. Others are, let me know. If he does join in the next few minutes, we can go back, but I think right now what I'll do is start reading the comments and the letters that we've received, and we've received about a dozen. And Wendy, thank you in advance for tag teaming these with me, and I'll begin with the first one. This first letter is from Carol Sanfilippo, Simsbury resident. As a longtime Simsbury resident, I am firmly opposed to the short-term rental ordinance that's being presented. My concern is twofold. One, our residential neighborhoods are not zoned for business activity. I cannot see any advantage in having residents in this town use their house as an Airbnb or short-term rental other than for profit with little or no regard for their neighbors. There's no security for their fellow neighbors to control the rental activity, or even more disturbing, allowing any residential house to use the internet to display their house as a short-term rental, or worse, an Airbnb. This would mean that my neighbor could conceivably rent his or her house daily for weekends or weekly. This practice was banned by the town of Simsbury previously, and I feel that it should stay that way. The security and safety of our neighborhoods are at risk due to the fact that they're not zoned for business activity of this kind. It would increase the traffic patterns of neighborhoods, creating an unsafe environment. Two, secondly, this would hurt our businesses who engage in this activity in business zones and are insured and set up appropriately. It could encourage people to invest in houses as short-term rentals or Airbnbs. Thank you for your time, and please reconsider this.
So the next one is from Denise and Steve Woodruff of 11 Country Club Drive in West Simsbury. Please be advised that as a resident of Simsbury, I am opposed to the short-term rentals in our town.
This next email is from Jerry Toner. I'm writing to strongly oppose the proposed short-term rental ordinance as currently written. Other communities have been negatively impacted by allowing short-term rentals, especially since the increase of online vacation and event rentals. Simsbury experienced this a number of years ago when a home on Old Farms Road was made available for this use. Neighbors were forced to call the police to deal with noise and parking issues. An ordinance such as the one proposed would cause an increase in disruption to residents while also affecting their property values. It will undermine the quality of life that led most residents to choose Simsbury. I strongly oppose this ordinance and urge that the content of any revised ordinance be better communicated to the public.
This next letter is from Pat Egan. Dear town of Simsbury, I would like to express my opposition to the proposed amendment. Simsbury is a residential community with strong neighborhoods and committed residents. Short-term rentals are detrimental to neighborhoods, possibly affect property values, and jeopardize public safety. Short-term rentals are also unfair to hospitality organizations that pay taxes, support the community at various events, all while complying with a host of regulations. Allowing a less regulated model and less expensive option is unwise for the community. Simsbury is not a resort town where short-term rentals are an expectation. Home prices are rising, inventory of available properties are shrinking. There is plenty of opportunity for people to sell their properties if they are unhappy in their current situation. We are a zoned community for a reason. Short-term rentals are an exception to zoning rules and community planning that we do not need.
This next letter is from Jay DeVivo and Kelly DeVivo, 15 Gates Farm, Kay Yablacki and Jim Yablacki of 65 Gates Farm, and Tara Finn and Tom Finn from 5 Gates Farm. I'm sorry, 75 Gates Farm. It's a lot of numbers. Platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO did not invent short-term rentals. They simply applied technology to an offline industry to make the process more efficient. For decades, owners of properties near beaches, mountains, and other vacation destinations have rented their properties for income. People choosing to live in these communities understand tourists coming in and out of their neighborhoods are part and parcel of living in a destination area. Issues on the impact to housing affordability aside, one can argue that the extension of short-term rentals does not have a meaningful impact on the quality of life for those who live in cities. Cities are high-density areas that people choose to live for convenience, cultural amenities, entertainment, and work. Privacy and tranquility are necessarily not high on the list of priorities for those choosing to live in cities. Simsbury is not a destination, and it is certainly not a city. People choose to live in Simsbury for our schools and bucolic setting. When we choose to live in Simsbury, we choose to forego the amenities of city living in exchange for privacy, quiet, and safety. When we decide to live in Simsbury, we're purchasing a quality of life. That Airbnb and its ilk enable anyone, anywhere, to rent to their home to anyone at any time does not mean we should permit it in Simsbury. The ability to do so is not a reasonable expectation of those who choose to live in Simsbury, as perhaps it is for people who live in areas where this type of, of living happens as a matter of course. We urge the Board of Selectmen to join a growing number of similar towns like Carmel, California, that prohibit short-term rentals. If the Board of Selectmen instead elect to permit short-term rentals, the following should be included in any ordinance: A limit of considerably less than the 100 days. We propose 30. Limiting short-term rental permits to homes that do not have accessory dwelling units. And language that prohibits property owners whose properties have been sites of disturbances due to similarly, similar activity in the past from being eligible to receive a short-term rental permit.
This next one is from Dan Sullivan. I recently learned of an effort to allow short-term rentals by companies such as Airbnb. I am very much opposed to this ordinance and hope that you will communicate my vote against this. There is a strong potential for a negative impact on neighborhoods if rentals become used for party houses, and the impact on property values would be very real. Please do not support this ordinance, as there are many other options in town for visitors to leverage and enjoy our community.
This next letter is from Jane Toner. I'm opposed to the short-term rental ordinance proposal in Simsbury for the following reasons, most of which I have had firsthand experience with. One, short-term rentals and their guests bring activity during all hours of the day and night, resulting in increased traffic and noise to the neighborhood. Two, vehicles that the short-term renters and their guests may drive multiple cars, trucks, or RVs, or trailered boats, increasing traffic. This ordinance can or will encourage investors to purchase homes in residential areas specifically to use as short-term rentals, therefore running hotel-like activity in your neighborhood and potentially next door to you. Three, if buyers of your home find out that this activity is happening near you or next door to you, it's detrimental to your property value. Four, this is a business activity and should remain limited to zoned business areas in town. And five, COVID or any emergency health restrictions do not apply to this ordinance and cannot be controlled, allowing renters from anywhere, domestic or foreign, to book rooms in residential areas. Example, recently with the onset and rapid spread of COVID, the state of Rhode Island had to place state police patrols on the highways and in residential neighborhoods to protect the local residents from out-of-state short-term renters coming in with a possible health risk to residents. Thank you for your attention, and I remain hopeful that these concerns hold weight in the decision-making process. Simsbury residents should be surprised at the short notice and lack of communication that this very important ordinance was given. It has the potential of affecting all residential areas of town, and for this and the above reasons, I strongly suggest that the Board of Selectmen deny this ordinance.
This is from Mark and Fay. Mark and Fay Thomasello of 30 White Oak Lane, Simsbury are opposed to the passing of the residential short-term rental ordinance proposed. We do not want this type of activity in our family neighborhood and do not think short-term rentals should be allowed in areas that are zoned residential.
This next one comes from Audra Harris. I've been a resident of Simsbury for over 20 years and oppose the new proposal for short-term rentals. It should remain as is, limited to the business zoned areas of town. Please vote no.
Dear, this is from Art Boothby, our buy. Dear Town Manager, I have worked in the housing industry for 48 years and have managed condo developments in Simsbury, including 1 West Street, Talcott Acres, Billings Gate, and a few others. This proposal to allow temporary renters is a bad idea. Will call, cause distress to neighborhoods and could be especially a problem in condo developments where investors buy units and then rent them out. The transient nature is a problem in and of itself, but it is also brings huge parking problems to areas when someone rents out a house for a weekend to be used as a party place, and there are no parking spots available beyond the one or two that are assigned to that unit. People will park anywhere, on lawns, blocking other driveways, in fire lanes, et cetera. This ordinance will drive down the values of other units in the community in proximity to those people taking advantage of Airbnb, and I strongly recommend that you do not entertain approving this ordinance.
This next email is from Stephanie Reif. And Stephanie, I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your last name, 5 Trainor Drive in Wheaton. I'm opposed to the short-term rental ordinance proposal in Simsbury for the following reasons. One, short-term rentals and their guests bring activity during all hours of the day and night, resulting in increased traffic and noise to the neighborhood. Two, vehicles that the short-term renters and their guests may drive multiple cars, trucks, RVs, or trailered boats, increasing traffic. Three, this ordinance can or will encourage investors to purchase homes in residential areas specifically to use as short-term rentals, therefore running hotel-like activity in your neighborhood and potentially next door to you. Four, if buyers of your home find out that this activity is happening near you or next to you, it's detrimental to your property value. And five, this is a business activity and should remain limited to zoned business areas in town. Thank you for your attention, and I remain hopeful that these concerns hold weight in the decision-making process. This has the potential of affecting all residential areas of town, and for this and the above reasons, I strongly suggest that the Board of Selectmen deny this ordinance.
Okay, my name is Carl Lund of 5 Trainor Drive, Wheaton, Connecticut, 06089, and formerly 4 Hazel Metal Place in Simsbury. This email was regarding the public hearing and opposition to the proposed residential short-term rental ordinance on Monday, November 8, 2021. I'm opposed to the short-term rental ordinance proposal in Simsbury for the following reasons. One, short-term rentals and their guests bring activity during all hours of the day and night, resulting in increased traffic and noise to the neighborhood. Our street has a large number of children who ride bikes and play in the neighborhood. Short-term renters renters pose a threat to the safety of those neighborhood kids as they have no way of knowing where and when they gather and play. Number two, vehicles that, that the short-term renters and their guests may drive multiple cars, trucks, or RVs, or trailer boats, increasing traffic. Three, the ordinance can or will encourage investors to purchase homes in residential areas specifically to use as short-term rentals, therefore running hotel-like activity in your neighborhood and potentially next door to you. Four, if buyers of your home find out that this activity is happening near you or next door to you, it is detrimental to your property value. Five, this is a business activity and should remain limited to zoned business areas in town. Thank you for your attention to this matter. A suburban neighborhood rental plan has the potential of affecting all residential areas of town, and for this and the above reasons, I strongly suggest the Board of Selectmen to deny this ordinance.
Okay, and those are all of the comments that we've received. I want to thank everybody who took the time to write to us. We have an agenda item a little bit later in our meeting to discuss this ordinance, and I wanted to see if there's a motion now to close this public hearing.
Um, Eric, I'm not sure that we should. Yeah, I'm not sure that we should close the public hearing if we haven't discussed it yet. Mike Glidden, I, can I throw it over to you? What's your thought?
Well, I mean, you have it as an agenda item. If you want to just state on the record, you know, what is your reviewing, maybe? We can go over the ordinance.
If, if Mike, if we close the public hearing now, but then have discussion later and want to seek more public comment, is there anything stopping us from doing that?
No, Maria can bet, it disagree. I think it's, it, once you close the public hearing, you're done for taking in public testimony or making substantive changes to the proposal.
Okay.
We made substantive changes, but if we make, if we don't make substantive changes, there's no point in having another public hearing. But if we do make substantive changes, then we're required to repost and have another public hearing, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Either we, either we don't need more comments because we're going to approve it tonight or decline it, or we need to go back and revise it, which means we need to post again. But either way, even if we kept it open, it doesn't, there's no advantage to us keeping it open, is there? Other than we, if we keep it open, we can't act tonight.
Correct.
Right?
So, so as the, outside of the, the concerns that I heard from in the public hearing, which we can address those to a certain extent during our discussion later on. What am I missing? I'm not, I'm not directionally thinking there are any changes to this ordinance as it stands. Certainly not from what I've heard so far. So unless there's been some other conversations occurring or concerns occurring around substantive changes, so why wouldn't we move it forward?
My thought would be that we close the public hearing now, and if we discuss later on and we decide that we do want to want more significant changes to the ordinance, then we'll have to have another public hearing anyway. So let me, I, I had asked if there was a motion to close the public hearing. Does anyone move that?
I do. Sean?
I'll second it.
Wendy seconded. Is there any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to closing the public hearing? Okay, and that passes. What we're going to do now is move to public audience. And we have Joan with us for a double header. Hi, Joan. I think you're on mute again. Still on mute.
Oh, okay, can you hear me now?
We've got you now. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Joan Co., 26 Wickham Drive. Simsbury's recent elections had resounding consequences. Deputy First Selectman Sean Askin lost his bid for first, for first selectman to Wendy Max Duesis. I'm sorry, Wendy, I don't pronounce your name properly. Heather Getz, candidate for selectman, won by 21 votes and is an automatic recount with selectman Jackie Bados. The recount will take place on Tuesday, November 9th to determine the final seat on the Board of Selectmen. Chairman of the Board of Finance, Rob Pomeroy, lost his seat on the Board of Finance. There appears to be discontent with both Town Manager Maria Capriola and Chief Bolter having morale in Town Hall at an old-time low. Town Manager Maria Capriola has usurped the powers of the Police Commission with a memorandum of understanding, MOU, using a non-binding document to assume the powers of the Police Commission. The rule of law was questioned. It appears that the Board of Selectmen on many occasions have gone into executive session to discuss the performance of Town Manager Maria Caprioli and could not come to a consensus with what appears to be some selectman not approving of Town Manager Maria Capriola's performance. There are many, there are rumors that many residents are interested in convening a charter revision commission to revise the charter. Simsbury has too many boards and commissions, many of which are performing tasks that are redundant and not beneficial to the community without tax dollars. Simsbury is the only town in the valley that has a Spirit Council that has been approved to be a formal town committee. The Board of Selectmen approved over $10,000 of taxpayer dollars for this Spirit Council. On the town's website, the Spirit Council states that Simsbury is a town that welcomes, celebrates, and takes action to support diversity and inclusion among current and future community members. The mission launched in September 2019. The Simsbury Spirit Council represents the community at large and serves as diversity champions to help Simsbury become more inclusive, fostering awareness, action in a community where all voices are welcome and each and every individual can live, work, learn, and play in a safe environment with meaningful and healthy relationships, end quote. Board of Education Equity stated, quote, "In the Simsbury Public Schools, SPS, an equitable system ensures that all members of our community can reach their full potential. For us, equity is the dismantling of racism and all forms of marginalization that impede growth and harm our community," end quote. "The Spirit Council and Equity Council appear to be aligned with the critical race theory." In Simsbury, as with other towns, there appears to be an uptick in mental health issues that are creating an unsafe environment at home, school, and public places. The mental health epidemic has only been given lip service with many people unable to receive proper medical care. Many people are suffering from alcoholism, drug addiction, anxiety, and depression. With the legalization of scots betting and marijuana, there is more family stress. There is a need in the schools to provide mental health services that at the present time are in short supply with increased caseloads. Many of the vacant buildings in the hotbed areas should be replaced with residential long-term care and outpatient facilities to meet the ever-growing mental health needs. I have recently filed a complaint with the Freedom of Information Commission to hold a hearing on the police department's failure to disclose the address of a person arrested for family violence. I have not received a date for the hearing, but on my conversations with the staff of Freedom of Information, addresses should not be adopted. Many of my comments at the Board of Selectmen meeting and other times have been posted on Twitter account, at Twitter, at Joan Co. for public view. Surprisingly, there is much interest in the postings. Lorenzo Millage, federal lawsuit against Simsbury Public Schools, had 193 people viewing and 59 people interacting with it. Town Manager Maria Caprioli Employee Recognition Day, with bagels and a torn bag on the table, had 229 views and 49 interactions. First Selectman Candidate contributions, 193 views and 20 interactions. Chief Bolter about badge board promotional services and per diem employment, 174 views, 25 interactions. Chief Bolter, badge quest, no bid, no contract, 124 views. Unmasked our kids sign, 173 views. Town Manager Office unmasked, unmasked staff, 233 views. Police Commissioner Mike Long, no front license plate, a violation of state law, 211 views and 43 interactions. My comments on the October 13, 2021 Board of Selectmen posting, there were 147 views. These tweets give the public an insight into town government, Simsbury town government. We need more voices to use the internet to bring the issues to the public and challenge our elected and appointed officials. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Co., and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Joan. I'm going to turn next to John Nagy, who is, is also with us this evening. Hi, John, are you there?
I am, thank you. So I'm commenting on the, the funds suggested to be allocated from the Ellsworth Trust for Simsbury beautification and Terriffill beautification with regard to holiday lighting. So as the president of the Terriffill Village Association, I'm very much in favor of Terriffill being included in whatever funds are allocated for holiday lighting. And I'm very pleased to be included. Sometimes Terriffill is not included, but I'm really happy that we are included this time around. And I really support this effort, and I thank you all.
All right, thanks so much for joining tonight, John. I think that's everybody we have for public audience tonight. Okay. We're going to turn next to Bob Crowther, who's the Chair of the EDC, Economic Development Commission. And I also saw that Ron Jodas is also on. Apologies if I missed anybody else on the committee. But each year at this time, the EDC shares a presentation, a summary of what they've done over the past year. So Bob, without any further ado, let me turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
I'm having a problem with my video. I don't know if that's on my end or your end or...
We're not seeing you, but oh, there you are. Yep.
Okay, um, for those who do not know me, I'm Bob Crowther. I'm the Chairman of the Simsbury Economic Development Commission. I'm here to present our yearly update. Melissa, you're going to put the screens on. Okay.
While you're doing that, I also wanted to recognize Morgan Hilliard from the chamber, who has also been, been close to your work, and she's on the call as well.
Thank you. So turning to the agenda page.
Oh, it disappeared.
I'm having a bit of trouble. Give me one second if you don't mind. I'll try a different way.
There we go. Thank you. Okay. What we planned to review here this evening is quickly go through our mission and our team members. We'll discuss the role of EDC in economic development in Simsbury. Review our existing work team projects and team assignments. Review our accomplishments from past October 2020 to September 2021. Discuss our plans for the next six to 12 months and then talk about or handle any questions and from the, from the audience. Next slide, please. So very quickly, our mission here is the Service and Advisory Board, the Board of Selectmen. The purpose of the commission shall be to promote and develop the economic resources of this town and to advance the town's economic development goals as defined by the Board of Selectmen. The commission shall be empowered to conduct research in economic conditions and trends and collaborate with community organizations which promote economic development. And we'll talk about a number of those as we go through our presentations. I am the Chair. I also participate in a business outreach initiative, and I'm also the liaison to the Sustainability Committee and the Design Review Board. Tom Earl is our Vice Chair, was also involved in a business incentive and initiative and business outreach with myself. He is also the liaison to... He is also the liaison to Planning and Land Use Development and the Spirit Council. Brooke Freeman is involved in our marketing initiative and is the liaison to Simsbury Main Street Partnership Program. Ron Jodas, Supporting Entrepreneurs Work Stream, as well as Liaison to Zoning Commission and a Short-Term Rental Ordinance Committee member. Peter Van Loon was also involved in the Business Incentives Initiative, as well as supporting Entrepreneur Work Stream and worked with the Business Development Incentive Committee member. And finally, Charmaine Seavey is involved with our marketing program as well as Business Outreach. And she is also our liaison to Tourism and Simsbury Main Street Partnership Program. We do have one slot available, and I know we're working to begin to fill that slot over the next several months. The staff members and ex-facile members and community partners, obviously Maria and Melissa from the Town Management, Mike Liddon, Director of Planning, Tom Fitzgerald, Management Specialist, Morgan Hilliard from Director, Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, while Sarah Nielsen is the Executive Director of Main Street Partnership, Bill Rice from the Planning Commission, Diane Madigan from the Zoning Commission, Andrew Sherman is the Simsbury Library Business Resource Center Coordinator, and Jackie Bados is our representative from Board of Selectmen. And I will say the attendance from those people at all their meetings has been terrific, and I appreciate all their efforts over the past year. Just as a quick review for everybody. EDC ordinance was adopted back in August of 2018. We are required to report annually to the Board of Selectmen on its activities by October 31st, which is why we're here today. And the Board of Selectmen then provides direction and goals to the EDC annually on or before November 30th. And I've said this in our previous meetings. You know, even though we are called the Economic Development Commission, we do not do economic development. We take direction from the Board. And so it's typically kind of a task orientation. The Board provides us with their direction on those projects or initiatives they wish for us to work on. And we do that, as we said many times, in collaboration with the other commissions in town, as well as the Main Street Partnership in the chamber. The Board of Selectmen then adopts our annual work plan for the EDC in November with EDC feedback. The initial four work streams are around business incentives, business outreach, marketing, and supporting entrepreneurs, and we've added to that over time. And I do believe we've got a meeting coming up to talk about our plans for 2022, pretty shortly. Next slide. Okay, so this is our adopted work plan for 2020 and 2021. The business incentive piece, what Peter and Tom worked on, we'll talk about that in just a minute. But basically, we've done our work and the policy was approved back in February 2021. The marketing initiative is moving along very nicely to refresh all the materials. There was an August presentation done from the output of Officer A. Forbes' cookies completed that was well received by the Board back on, I believe the meeting was on August 9th. In Business Outreach, we've had a number of different initiatives going on. We've continued to conduct meetings with our largest taxpayers in town. Unfortunately, all of these have been done virtually. But we've also met with our nonprofits and education faith-based organization related to pandemic recovery. We've implemented a shadow program at the request of Jackie Bados. Excellent idea to have one individual focus on a key, a major development project in town and see that through from the beginning all the way through end. So we start to develop the relationship early on with a developer, and that's ongoing. We've, we have an outstanding initiative around refinding signage, but we haven't gotten that project funded yet, so that's still on the list of, you know, work to be done. And finally, in the areas of support entrepreneurs. We'll talk about the work they've done in that area around to promote access to business resources, information, and infrastructure, as well as to develop coworking space and a proposal around coworking space. We'll get into that in more detail in a little bit. Next slide, please. Around business incentives, Peter and Tom, working with Maria, Melissa, and Mike, they completed the research around the business incentives and provide recommendations to the Board of Selectmen and an update to the business incentive policy, which was presented to the Board back in February 2021. And those guidelines have been adopted by the Board. And so we view this project now as complete. Next slide. In Business Outreach, myself, Tom, Charmaine, Maria, Melissa, Mike, Tom, as well as any member, other members, Jackie's an active participant on these calls. We have done business outreach to our top taxpayers. It's been a little bit inhibited because we had to do these virtually over Zoom. So last year, we were able to do Mitchell Lotto, Donald Nobel, Chris Nelson, that has worked with Land Works Development, EBAD, McLean, a couple of different calls back in November 2020, as well as May of this year. Cure Leaf back in May of this year, and we recently had one with the Andrea family back in September. As I mentioned, these are virtual visits right now. I'd love to, we look forward to the day we can do those in person. The staff and EDC members have a number, we've had a number of different follow-ups from the businesses. I think I find these very, very helpful. You know, really starting to develop a tighter relationship with our top taxpayers at the top. An excellent example of some of the follow-ups in our meeting with McLean, they mentioned Mr. Bernard Datto, excuse me, mentioned that Simsbury typically funds his Wheels on Meals program and did not see funding for the previous year, Maria pointed out to him. Well, not only did we approve it, but we actually increased our funding, and he was not aware of that. So that's an excellent example of why we have these meetings and, you know, some of the follow-ups that we do. But I think it goes a long way to tighten our relationship with top taxpayers. Next slide, please. Last year, we were asked by the Connecticut Council of Municipalities to reach out to our businesses and our nonprofits to see how they were coping with the pandemic. That was a 2020 initiative that reported on last year. This year, we came back and said, we're a year into this now. It would be good to follow back up with them to see how well they've, you know, managed through the pandemic. And so we, so Tom Earl and I kind of divided up the services organization to private schools and churches to make multiple calls on them and to get their feedback and see how well they've done. And so I'm here to report on that. With our social services organizations, as you can imagine, it's been a very difficult year for them. The Department of Social Services in Simsbury said they saw an increase in demand that was twice the normal amount that they typically see on a yearly basis. Yet within that increased demand, the good news is that Thomas Simsbury responded in a very positive way, both in the Moncherry donations as well as food donations. So any needs that were needed by the community, we were able to provide them or our group of social services organizations were able to meet those needs. Gifts of Love, while their membership was down, they continued a backpack program that provides lunches for students in the Farmington Valley on a weekend basis. The numbers increased to well over 225 backpacks that they needed to create on a, excuse me, 275 needy students on a weekly basis. And the Food Share Program, they have a mobile food share that comes to First Church, I think it's every other Monday. And they've hosted over 100 people every two weeks throughout the entire pandemic. So the need has been great, but we've been able to meet that need. And a lot of that has to do with just the quality of the people in Simsbury responding to that in a very positive way. With our private schools, we talked to Westminster and Ethel Walker. We actually had two different responses here, it's kind of interesting. Westminster had a very strong year, able to teach in class with only limited concerns with classes being canceled due to COVID late in the year. But they had a record student enrollment of over 400 students and a record annual giving. And they made a requirement for all students in faculty to be vaccinated for the school year. So they came out of this very, very strong. Ethel Walker, on the other hand, had a very challenging year. They were able to stay open all year with no COVID cases until late in the year. They did require PPE loans to maintain full employment, but they were able to work through a number of those challenges and did have a very productive year. One of the comments they made was, they really found that there was excellent community within the private schools, talking to each other, helping each other, looking at good ideas, what's working, what's not working, helping each other out. So the good, strong sense of community in that, they felt was a very, very positive coming out of the COVID situation. With our churches, we didn't contact as many as we did from the previous year, but we still got some very good feedback from them. All stated it was a challenging year, they all had to make adjustments. But they were able to work through those issues. They all used PPE loans and membership financial support to financially work through their operations and their budgets throughout the year. And they're also able to maintain membership numbers. A number of them talk about maybe the mix changing a little bit. The numbers stayed pretty consistent, and they're all feeling very, very good about coming out of the pandemic with a good, strong, you know, membership numbers. The folks at Methodist Church talked about having time to reflect on what we do and why we do it and the membership that was very, very positive for them. When the Jewish synagogue was able to hold large events with limitations, but they're feeling coming out of a difficult time stronger. So a challenging year for all of these organizations, but I think coming out of here, I feel like we've learned a lot and we're stronger for the activities that we've done. And my apologies for the dog in the background. Next slide, please.
2021, Bob, you don't need to apologize for dogs barking.
Okay.
It's all good.
On the marketing side, Sarah and Charmaine and Brooke have been working with Dornburg and Collinburger Advertising Team. The work done this year was around an initial fact gathering process to refresh the marketing brand for the messages for the town of Simsbury. As you know, they presented to you all back on August 9th of this year. And the presentation was very well received. Very interesting feedback, you know, from their surveys and be able to find that people really do appreciate Simsbury for a number of different characteristics, a small-town vibe, the beauty, the public schools, the outdoor activities, the safety. And I found it kind of interesting during the talk about the short-term rentals, you know, people come back reinforcing those same concepts. But it was also very important when they talked about that the residents and visitors are able to take advantage of the investments already made by the town, like the hiking trails and the bike trails, Simsbury Farms, the Flower Bridge, the library, Simsbury Performing Arts Center. So it's just, it speaks to the, a good return on investment where the town has made investments. And, you know, people are really starting to appreciate the quality of life that they have here in Simsbury. So all very, very positive. Next steps for next year, which will be a major focus for our team, will be to build out the marketing materials and the messaging to support realtors, Town Hall, and tourism efforts here in town, as well as provide consistent messaging across all of our media platforms, both on our websites and our brochures. And we'll meet with the Spirit Council to determine if there are some synergies between their marketing project and what we've done and see if we can get some leverage from those things. So very positive message going forward, and we're very excited about the work that's to be done for next year. Next slide. Supporting Entrepreneurs. This has been a very fun project and a very interesting one to work with the local businesses, the Chamber and the Library Business Resource Center in particular, to develop a town approach to coworking space. You know, the definition of coworking space has some combination of individual office space, open office space, conference rooms, and shared offices for an individual to use. We're trying to target entrepreneurs, but it could be really anybody really looking for, you know, a place to set up their business. We found through our research that, you know, Manchester in particular has gone through a major investment to take a building in town and redevelop the whole building for workspace. You know, we saw back in August, Hartford Current had an excellent article on, over in West Farms Mall, that the developers over there for the Lord &amp; Taylor Building was going to, they were going to refurbish that for coworking. So it's a very popular concept. It's one where towns are making major investments in it and, you know, our neighboring towns are making major investments in it. So we've been working hard to come up with a way where we can try to promote coworking spaces here in Simsbury. So working with Sherman and the Public Library Resource Center and with the Chamber, Morgan and her team, we've come up with a proposal for coworking space. It's a very simple proposal to, with multiple different tenants with it, and we'll go through each of those in just a second. But the first one really is just to create a coworking website, start to bring buyers and sellers together. We would inventory the property managers throughout the town identifying any open space, and we would promote those and work to promote the opportunities with the idea of bringing sellers to buyers together. And then once those two are connected, they can go off and work on their own deal for how they want to do it. So we are just trying to facilitate the marketing of those opportunities. And I think it would do a great way in promoting business here in Simsbury. So we're very excited about that. But in addition, we thought about, once that website is built, there's a number of other resources that we could start to add to that website. Take our Doing Business in Simsbury Guide, if you will. It needs to be updated. It's pretty long in the tooth at this point, so we could use a refurbish. But once that's done, we could put that out there. It's a very important document for people looking to do business in Simsbury, understanding what they need to do, as well as putting a development guide out there for people that are, you know, trying to understand the permit process and what they need to do to work with Town Hall to get things done, as well as potentially create a tourism map that would identify all the different attractions and activities that are available here in Simsbury. So at a single source, a single point of contact, if you will, provide a number of different resources to help promote our town and start to grow our town. So we think it's a very important proposal. We've attached it to this presentation. We hope you take the time to take a look at it. The one I'd like to promote them is the first piece is on the coworking website. Very small dollar amount, $3,500 to actually build the website and another $5,000 annually to maintain it. Small amount of money, we think they could have a potential big return. So we're looking forward for your support on that as we go forward. Next slide. Other efforts that members of our team have been involved with over the past year. I worked with Tom Tversky and his staff to assist in the development of the RFQ for the Town Restaurant. Ron Jodas was involved in the Short-Term Rental Group that you all are working on. And Melissa and I worked closely with Morgan in the Chamber Government Affairs Committee to help with their speaker series. One of the changes that David Richman and Morgan wanted to do around that particular meeting was to get more involvement of town government officials. So we've helped them with their speakers there. We've had Mike Liddon presented his development update back in March. He's going to do another one here shortly. Maria came in and talked about the budget in April. We had Stephen Antonio talk about the Design Review Board, and Dave Ryan talked about the Zoning Commission and update. Those two in particular focused a lot of their time on educating the people on, you know, why, you know, what is the role of the Design Review Board? What are they looking for? What are they really trying to accomplish? And they did the same with the Zoning Commission and talked about some of the issues and challenges that they're facing, and the business community found they're extremely helpful for their own purposes as they start, you know, moving forward. And we've got Sarah lined up to come in in November to talk about the marketing refresh update and discussion at that time. So we were very, very, you know, glad we're able to help the Chamber out with their efforts. Next slide, please. So looking ahead for remainder 2021 and 2022, you know, what initiatives can be identified that where we can, you know, identify some new work streams for us? Things like, you know, working with the Spirit Council. you know, identify some new work streams for us, uh, things like, you know, working with the spirit council. They've got a lot of really exciting things going on. What can we do to help them move forward? How can EDC help with the affordable housing planning that's, uh, generated such interest across the town? How can we continue to identify creative ways to interact with our business leaders to maintain communications with town hall? How can we look for improvements in town-wide processes that continue to make Simsbury a town that it's quote unquote, easy to do business? Cause that's really the, the goal and our objective there. So I know, um, we've, we've had some initial meeting with some of the ideas. I know Eric, you and I, and I believe Jackie are getting together to talk about some more uh, in the weeks to come. So we look forward to that meeting. Um, and with that, I'm, I'm done and willing to take on any questions.
Oh, thank you. And, uh, thanks to the entire EDC and, uh, staff who support the EDC um, in, in putting this together. Uh, I wanted to, uh, just start by seeing what questions members of the board have.
So, um, Eric, I think it was last month that we talked about the doing business in Simsbury and talked about going back to the original creators for this document.
I'm, I'm sorry, Jackie, I'm drawing a blank.
Yeah, I, we talked about, um, that it was basically a series of links to different reference sites. I, I, I don't remember where we talked about it though, but we did talk about it. Um, I know that's one of the, something in the EDC. Um, you know, list of things to do along with the map and the, the co-working space. But is tonight, I just have a question. Is tonight just a report on this? You know, it's because they've included the, the co-working space proposal in here. Um, what, what's the next step for us to review this by the next meeting and then accept the recommendations here or review those?
Right now, it's just for your information. Um, I know Maria is working on trying to get funding for those initiatives. Um, so there really is no need to take any action on it until we think we have, um, access to that funding.
So, so I have just a quick question on the co-working space, just because I know from my, the travelers and places like that, that set up these big co-working spaces with, you know, onsite are now dealing with the post-COVID world that nobody really wants to co-work anymore. Um, and that people have home offices and are happy to work at home. So coming from, you know, and it maybe it was a good idea a few years back. I, I guess what I'm looking for is where can, can you guys point me to where now it is a good idea that people are really actively pursuing this type of environment? Because
Yeah, I think, I think the, the, you know, what you're saying, I, you know, we can debate whether or not there's a need or not. I think if you talk to Sher uh, Andrew Sherman at the Business Resource, you know, he's the one who allocates space today for businesses. He's scheduled those rooms. He's books solid.
Okay.
So he is, he's very strong behind, you know, the need we need to do. It'd be great to have something here. Um, and we're not looking to, you know, build a brick and mortar. We're just trying to create, hey, there's existing office space in town. Maybe there's a way to take advantage of that and, and make people aware of those office spaces that are available. And, um, but I would, right now we're looking, if, if you take that view, uh, it's a point in time, right? So today, I'm not sure how many spaces we have available. Maybe the spaces are fully occupied. Who knows?
Yep.
Three, four, five years from now, who knows? And so I would ask the board to think about this not as a point in time kind of decision, but think about this as you know, the original intent here, how can we support entrepreneurs? What can you, what can we do? What creative things can we do? And this is one of the things we're seeing. It could be a very nice idea. You know, down the road, if you, one of the things I found very interesting, there was a nice article in the Hartford Current back in June. Where did I see that? No, just recently. About, you know, entrepreneurs are looking for fun places to live where there's tons of activities and and, uh, you know, I don't want to be tied down to my desk when I get out and do things. And then so, okay, let's start connecting the dots here in Simsbury. We just completed this marketing survey, right? It says, what a great town we have here, all these fun activity things to do and hiking and biking. And now we got disc golf going on, you know? What a fun place to live. So, okay, so if I, uh, we want to attract those kinds of people there. When we attract them, then we want to be able to find them a place to work. So think about this co-working website development. And that's all we're talking about. We're just building a website. Very, very small amount of money. It's not a point in time kind of decision. You need to think about this for the long term.
Okay.
Well, Bob, do you think that?
Well, I'm, before-
Do you think we could, oh, go ahead, Eric?
I just wanted to make sure it was on this topic because I think Morgan wanted to just add something. Um, can you just hold the question for one second, Jackie?
Sure.
Um, Morgan, do you want to add something on the co-working space?
Hi, yes, thank you. I would love to. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yep, great. So, um, Bob's points were, um, perfectly expressed. So this isn't just a glimpse in the demand right now, but the co-working has been a trend for years and years for, um, facilities like spaces and WeWorks to open up within a variety of towns and, and areas. And in privately owned co-working places as well. One thing we had discovered that I had mentioned in a, in a previous EDC meeting is, um, I believe it's West Hartford co-working or a business similar to that had actually purchased domain names having to do with Simsbury and co-working in surrounding towns because the demand really is there. And what we've been seeing from our own property owners is the revolving door of, you know, people wanting to be released from their leases due to COVID or other, you know, situations, but then also having other leases come in to fill those spaces. But then the struggle has been real for them to fill all of their spaces. And we were seeing that earlier this year and last year, really a difficult time for those property owners to fill all of their vacant, um, office space. And, um, what we've been seeing from all of the members that are active within the chamber and especially the new members that have relocated to Simsbury from cities is yes, they're working from home, but they actually are sick of it. I think a lot of people can speak to that. The kids running around, the pets barking in the background as we were hearing from Bob earlier. Um, it really does hinder productivity when you're working from home and people enjoyed the, the freedom and the opportunity this past year, but at this point they're ready to get productive again, to get back into the flow of things, um, pick up the slack and get moving again. And they have been inquiring the Chamber of Commerce for opportunities for um, office space in the area. They're no longer wanting to go to the coffee shops. That's kind of been done and they're over it. Um, so they're looking for office space, but they are less willing to commit to a longer-term lease. So our property owners are kind of in a jam right now. They're used to a longer lease agreement and the customers are wanting something that's a little more flexible. So that's where this opportunity steps in and we serve as the middle man to connect them. We're not, you know, making deals at all. We're not taking payments. We're simply facilitating.
Morgan, to that end, I, I have a question on, on the last thing you just said. So if the property owners aren't willing to change the lease, then what is the value of middle man? Cause the property has to change their mentality for this to work, right?
A hundred percent. And I think that's where this, you know, further facilitates the entire process is when these clients or potential clients are dealing directly with the property owners, they're trying to whittle down the agreement um, lengths that the property owner is used to. They're trying to whittle down the, the terms to suit their specific needs. But when this is coming in and being launched, it's already setting the expectation for shorter leases, for flexibility. So the property owners already set the expectations for what they're willing to come in as on this type of, you know, forum, this website. So they'll have the opportunity to already design what they're comfortable with and they won't have to, you know, be in a car salesman kind of scenario where they're going back and forth with the potential client.
Gotcha. Thanks, thanks for that contact, Morgan. Um, uh, Jackie, I'm sorry, uh, please go ahead with your question.
Well, Bob had brought up, um, the library. So I guess and same with Morgan. Instead of just looking at a Manchester or West Hartford, both of what, you know, we're not those densities. Um, we're not a city yet. And, um, our yards and our neighborhoods are much more spread out. But to be more specific, I would ask that, um, we get some data from Sherm. So is the library always full? Is it a conference room that's full? Um, are, you know, my understanding is people are looking for office space. Is, you know, full, is, you know, being moved? So let's get some data on this.
Yeah, fair enough.
That's a good point, Jackie. Um, are there other questions for Bob? Um, so as some next steps, uh, the incoming Board of Selectmen is going to have, uh, a goal-setting meeting. And I think that that meeting could help, uh, inform future work items for the EDC. Um, but Bob, I want to continue to extend an invitation to, you know, you and your members, if there's anything that you think we're not talking about or anything that, you know, the group would be particularly interested in working on, we're always interested in hearing those ideas too.
Okay. Very good.
Chris, Chris Hets, did he just disappear? I was trying to say something before, but he just disappeared. So.
Okay. All right. Um, well, thank you everyone from, uh, Bob and, and Ron and Morgan for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks a lot, guys. Really appreciate it.
Uh, I will, uh, continue with my first selectmen's report. I wanted to thank everybody who participated in Tuesday's municipal elections and congratulations to, uh, First Selectman-elect Wendy McStudis and our incoming Board of Selectmen. Uh, based on preliminary results, that includes Sean Eskim, Chris Peterson, myself and newly elected members Amber Abuel and Heather Getz. The town of Simsbury's website has a full breakdown of the election results. Um, on Thursday, um, VFW Post nineteen twenty-six and American Legion Post eighty-four are holding an observance for Veterans Day. Um, that's November eleventh at ten forty-five AM at the Simsbury Veterans Memorial outside of the library. All are welcome to attend. The keynote speaker will be Lisa Philopon, a US Army veteran, Golden Blue Star Mother, an outreach coordinator for resilience grows here. The Simsbury Camera Club is holding its second family photo shoot at the library on Saturday, November thirteenth. The cost is fifty dollars per family for a twenty-minute session. And you can find more information under the programs tab on the library's website. The annual Simsbury celebrates event will take place on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November twenty-seventh from four to eight PM. From five to seven PM, there'll be a drive-through fire truck parade. Cars are being asked to line up along Owens Brook Boulevard coming towards Iron Horse. And then at eight o'clock, there'll be a fireworks display sponsored by Big Y, Simsbury three fifty and Simsbury celebrates. Uh, the fireworks can be viewed from the high school, the middle school and Simsbury Farms. Then you can find more information on all of the activities at simsburycelebrates.com. In collaboration with, uh, community volunteers, the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce is presenting Simsbury Lights the Night from November twenty-sixth to December second. Businesses and residents are encouraged to decorate their locations and enter their address as participants. There will be an online forum that will be available soon. There won't be voting this year, but participants will be entered to win prizes. Keep an eye out for more information on the Chamber's website or on their Facebook page. Uh, lastly, Community for Care is holding a mindfulness workshop in the Terriffill Room at the Simsbury Public Library, November tenth, six thirty PM. Join school psychologist Kathy Ernst and school counselor Pam Sickinger for a discussion of the benefits of mindfulness. Participants will learn how a regular mindfulness practice can help manage uncertainty and build resilience for addressing future challenges. Uh, advanced registration is suggested on the library's website. I'll turn it over now to Maria for the town manager's report.
Great. Thanks, Eric. Good evening, everyone. Uh, leading off with our coronavirus update, um, for the most recent two-week period, um, we did creep back into the orange municipal alert level just ever so slightly um, at ten point four cases per hundred thousand people. Um, again, that's for, uh, the most recent, uh, two-week period worth of data. We did have, uh, in the second week of, of that reporting period, uh, a bit of a, an outbreak at a, um, at a residential complex for folks, uh, age, uh, fifty-five and over. Um, so that particular outbreak did impact our overall statistics, um, for the most recent two-week period. Um, FHD is reporting that twenty-two percent of all cases within the health district, um, were in school-aged children between the ages of four and eighteen. Um, and that people aged forty to sixty-nine represented the larger, uh, largest number of cases at thirty-six percent of total cases. Um, the health district is focusing its vaccination efforts on, on vaccinated children and providing boosters to homebound, uh, individuals that had received their initial doses with the health district. Um, the health district has scheduled three first dose and three second dose clinics for children five years of age and older, uh, here in the Farmington Valley. Um, one of those locations is Avon, one is Granby, and we're very fortunate, uh, we will be hosting, uh, a clinic here in Simsbury. The first dose clinic is on November twentieth, uh, and the second dose clinic is on December eleventh. Um, there was such a demand, um, for those clinic sessions, they filled up relatively quickly. Um, so with the assistance of our emergency management director, Mike Berry, uh, we were able to activate the regional medical corps, uh, volunteer service. Uh, and the health district was able to offer some additional slots for, for our community during that time. But they are looking for volunteers, um, to help with the clinic. Um, and if you are interested in, in, in helping, please contact Anna Larson at the health district and her information is provided in the report. And, uh, just a reminder that we are continuing, uh, mask-wearing in our municipal buildings at this time. Um, we're doing so to help protect our staff to ensure that the essential services and infrastructure that we're providing uh, do remain open and operational for the public amongst other factors. Uh, and also just a reminder that the statewide order does still remain in place for indoor settings for unvaccinated individuals. A few updates under Board of Selectmen Business. Um, just a reminder that we have a training session on the Municipal Employees Relation Act, otherwise known as MIRA, uh, coming up this Wednesday evening at five thirty PM. That session will be held virtually and conducted by Mike Carrington, our labor council. Um, it will also include members of the Board of Finance and the Police Commission. Um, I do think that you'll find, uh, the session really informative and I'm very grateful to those that are able to participate. Uh, another, uh, reminder, uh, regarding the November twenty-second, uh, meeting, well, actually I should say two reminders on this. Uh, we will be doing an update on the town facilities master plan at that meeting. Um, we are also working to try and schedule that meeting as a hybrid meeting, um, since we will be recognizing our outgoing board members at that time. Um, tentatively, we're looking to hold that meeting, uh, for those who can attend in person at the library, just because there is a larger program room available, but we are firming up those details and we'll be sure to email that too. And then in conjunction with our facilities master plan update, uh, we will be conducting a facilities tour for members of the Board of Selectmen as well as the Board of Finance. We have both a morning and afternoon session um, scheduled on November twenty-ninth. For folks who might not yet have, let us know your availability. If you'd like to participate, please, uh, be, be sure to let us know. And another reminder, our annual tri-board budget meeting is coming up on December first. Um, right now that's scheduled for five thirty PM. There is a possibility we may push that back to six PM, uh, just based on availability. Um, that meeting format will likely be virtual. And, uh, newly elected officials who are not yet sworn in, uh, will have the ability to participate in that meeting, just not vote. And a few department news and notes from Culture, Parks and Recreation, very good news. The Simsbury Farms ice rink is now open, uh, for the season. Uh, we do have public skate times available. Um, the Learn to Skate classes, uh, for the first session were so popular, they've already sold out. Uh, but we will have, uh, Learn to Skate lessons, uh, for the winter session opening up. Uh, the registration opens up on December first at eight AM and we've provided the link in the report. And just adding briefly to the Simsbury celebrates information that Eric provided, um, we are still looking for volunteers to help staff the event as well as donations to help support the event. Um, so we do have a website, simsburycelebrates.com and would encourage people to please check that out. And from finance, um, we're really pleased to announce the promotion of Kelsey Chamberlain to our Deputy Finance Director Deputy Treasurer, uh, position. Um, Kelsey's been with us since two thousand nineteen. Um, she has a bachelor's degree in, uh, mathematics and business and, uh, management. And she's currently pursuing her master's degree in accounting and finance. Um, prior to working for us, she was a pension analyst. Um, so she has a really terrific skillset. Um, she just started in her new role uh, within the last week. She's already doing really good work and we're just so, uh, happy for her and really pleased, um, pleased with the work she's done so far. And from the library, this is a really neat project. Um, I'm very proud of, of the work that the library and, and public work staff, uh, did to make this happen. But we now have, um, three benches outside of the library. Um, and they are accompanied by solar powered charging stations for your electronics. And they are also- And they are also in front of our raised planting boxes for our pollinator boxes. So it's just a really, I think, really special outdoor space that they've created, and just would encourage folks to take advantage of that new space. And from Public Works, also pleased to announce that Tony Lopez was recently hired as our construction inspector. Tony has come to us with private sector experience and a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Central Connecticut State University. He'll primarily be working with the Steward Department on their utility projects, but will also be assisting us with more general infrastructure infrastructure projects as well. So very glad to have him on board and would like to welcome him. And just want to also quickly point out, in another example of the town and Board of Education working cooperatively, Public Works recently secured a new electrical generation contract, not only for all of our town accounts, which includes sewer treatment facility, but also for the Board of Education. I really want to thank our Director of Public Works, Tom Roy, for his effort there, and we've been really pleased with the outcome. And just lastly, from Social Services, if you are a family, individual, business, who would like to participate in our holiday program to help support a family in need, please contact Social Services at 860-658-3283. Or if you are an individual that might benefit from being the recipient of that program, we would encourage you to reach out as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you are listening closely to my report on Simsbury Celebrates, the information that I shared was outdated. A keen observer reached out to me, Tom Tbersky. Thank you. The information on their website is currently outdated. It was last year's information. This year's event will be taking place the Saturday after Thanksgiving, but it'll be much closer to what you remember traditionally as Simsbury Celebrates with the firetruck parade and different activities downtown. So I'll make sure that that is updated for when it goes out tomorrow. So we'll move on now to Selectment Action. Tax refund requests, item A. Is there a motion effective November 8th, 2021, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $34,095.36 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
I think Mike seconded it, if I read your lips carefully. Okay, perfect. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item B is a donation from the Archdiocese of Hartford. Is there a motion effective November 8th, 2021, to accept a donation from the Archdiocese of Hartford in the amount of $1,625 for the purpose of supporting our food programs, which assists residents in need?
I'll move that.
Good.
Second with our thing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, this is an annual grant that the town receives from the state where the Greater Hartford Transit District serves as a pass-through. The grant is for a little over $6,600, and it supports our dial-a-ride service. I'm looking, I don't think Kristen's on. I just wanted to see if there was anything that staff wanted to add, or if there are any questions on this item.
You covered it.
Okay. Is there a motion effective November 8th, 2021, to accept the fiscal year 2122 grant funds from the Greater Hartford Transit District to support our dial-a-ride program and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award?
I'll move that, Eric.
I heard Mike and then.
I'm way back. Give it to those guys.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item D is the Federal Fiscal Year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant Program. This is something that comes to us around this time each year. The Region 3 Regional Emergency Planning Team, which Simsbury is a part of, is receiving about $385,000 in federal money to support regional projects. And in order for Simsbury to be eligible for some of these dollars, we need to opt in and approve the resolution that's attached in the packet. Maria, was there anything that you wanted to add on this item?
Again, just that this is an annual item that we've seen the last few years, and our Capital Region Council of Governments is the fiduciary and pass-through for this particular grant program.
Okay, were there any questions? Is there a motion effective November 8th, 2021, to approve the Federal Fiscal Year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant Program Memorandum of Agreement, which makes the town of Simsbury eligible for regional allocations made through the Region 3 Regional Emergency Planning Team? And also, effective November 8th, 2021, is there a motion to approve the attached resolution that authorizes the town manager to execute all of the documents that are related to the grant award?
So moved.
Sean second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Item E, this is proposed use of Ellsworth Trust for downtown Simsbury and Terriffill beautification for holiday lighting. This is an opportunity to use a little under $1,000 from the Ellsworth Trust to string holiday lights in downtown Simsbury and also along Main Street and Terriffill. The Ellsworth Trust currently has about $21,000, and this really is the intended purpose for street beautification projects. But in order for the money to be allocated, it requires this board's approval. Tom, anything you wanted to add on this item? I assume that your folks would be involved.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate the chance. Yeah, it would be a combination of Public Works and Park and Rec doing this and maintaining the lights through the holiday season. This is something I think we all remember used to be done about 15 years ago or so. When I know when I was my first term here, and then at some point the town got away from it. But it would be the 39 decorative lantern poles on Hot Meadow Street between Drake Hill and the Town Hall, both sides of the street. And also the four poles on the Terriffill Green as well. So that's what we'll be looking to do. If approved, this project will begin this week, and the lights will be on through, you know, early January, whether allowing us to take them down at that point. But I appreciate, you know, this is something the Park and Rec Board has been behind. They're looking to help with or assist with downtown beautification, and I think it'd be a nice thing. I know from social media the last few years, it's been a lot of interest in this project, and I hope you'll give it some consideration.
Well, I have a question. Is it too pricey to do it on Iron Horse, too?
It would be another. There are a lot of poles. It'd be another $500 to $600, just off the top of my head. It's about $20 per pole and about, I would say about 20 minutes per pole to do it.
Okay, it was just a little thought. That's all.
Yeah.
But I love the other, you know, whatever. It'd be beautiful.
Yeah. Jackie, were you gonna jump in?
I just had a question, Tom. I'm not familiar with the Ellsworth Trust. Are there other things we've done with this trust?
I'll let Maria speak more on it. I know we've used it recently for the Hopbrook Landing project with the last time.
Yeah, Maria, were you gonna, is there context you can provide?
You know, I really don't think this is a source that we've tapped into often since I've been here. I don't really know the origins of the trust, with the exception of that it was left to us for essentially downtown beautification projects. There's also a caveat that we need to maintain a minimum balance of at least $3,000 left in the trust. So we do have a little over $18,000, you know, available to work with. Another caveat from the trust was just that the Board of Selectmen needs to essentially approve the expenditures from the trust. Because I know this is a relatively, you know, small amount of money, and normally at a staff level, we would just sort of take care of the purchase and get it done. But we wanted to do our best to make sure that we were complying with the trust requirement.
I love the idea.
Is the, so I, shame on me for not knowing more about this trust. I'll take this. I'll take the hit for everybody on the team here, okay, and ask the questions. Maria, is it, how is the trust funded? Is it, was it just an initial fund, or does it take continued donations? Or is it just accruing through some modest investment portfolio?
Yeah, Amy could probably, I think, probably be best positioned to answer that question.
I can take that. So since the money was donated, hello, it was in investments, and it's just adding interest over the years. It's just accruing interest over the years off of the principal originally. There's no active donations going into it, most likely because people just don't know about it, as it was received some time ago. So it's just the principal that's built up over the years.
So, thank you. Just again, more. Maybe this question was just asked and I was zoned out, but the, when was the last time we dipped into it, or does nobody remember the last time?
I just sense that.
Okay, so then what was the, do we know from when it was set up? Do we know what the first initial, because I, it would be interesting to know the history from when it was first set up. Do we, could anybody at some point find out what the first initial usage of it was? Because I bet those two were, I think those, I bet you those two events were linked when it was set up, and then probably the first had people who were connected to the initiative at the beginning. So it would just, why I say that, because it would just kind of, although this is for beautification, this is downtown. It's like, it would just make sure that we're keeping in that spirit if it could kind of look like what it had been originally used for. That's all. It's an interesting research.
Yeah, well, definitely. I mean, I can take a look into it and see what we might be able to dig up on past expenditures. And then related, you know, to sort of this type of project, another idea that Tom T. and Tom R. And I have tossed around, might be to think about maybe purchasing some seasonal banners for the springtime. So the Performing Arts Center in Main Street at different points during the year do use banners on our signposts downtown. But during the spring, they tend to go unused. And so that's another idea that we had is, you know, could be, again, have something really, you know, beautiful printed. That's again, very spring, very seasonal, to better utilize those signposts during that particular time of the year, as well as to incorporate Terriffill in that project. But that's something we're still working on, so we don't quite have a proposal for that for you yet. But again, the holiday lights is something that, as Tom had mentioned, you know, we have received some feedback from folks over the last year or two in particular. Saying, gosh, we'd really love to see that again. Could you do that? Could you do that? And so we thought that the trust might be a really nice funding source for this project.
Great. Well, I think it's, yeah, I'm sorry, Jackie, go ahead.
Well, I just, I guess I have more questions because I don't know this fund, and I didn't, it doesn't sound like, like you said, it's been underutilized, maybe. Is there a process for, for this decision? Or how we came about, let's do the lights, or the recommendations?
Yeah, so again, this was just, you know, a project I think that staff hasn't interested and has an interest in doing. Again, the idea has come from a number of residents who, you know, have reached out to us, again, just sort of with a desire to start this tradition again. But again, the use of the funds, we cannot do without your permission. So essentially, any request to use the expenditures would just need to come through you all.
Can we continue with the funds history lesson at a budget meeting? Because, you know, it's important, but I think, I mean, we've got a very reasonable expenditure in front of us, and it's permissible use.
Yeah, so that's Sean, I agree. So I was just thinking about, maybe just don't tap into that. I like, first of all, I support the idea. I love it. I think that is something that's missing from sort of the fabric of our community. And, but what I wouldn't want to do is actually jump into that fund and grab it. Because we take $3,000 from the 18, it's basically this interest, it's passive interest-bearing from probably some very, you know, conservative vehicle. You're gonna, next year, when this comes around again, it's gonna be like, well, it's gonna be likely that, because you don't, we don't do something like this and then stop it. That's, I think that's bad. That's bad precedent. It's bad precedent to start the project, but it's also bad precedent to take it from someplace and then continue, because that's gonna, that's gonna wind that fund down in five years, and it won't be there. And that, I don't know is really what we should be doing with that fund. We should be using it, but not spinning it down that quick. So I think we should move, my vote would be to move away from the Ellsworth Fund. Better understand it's the stewardship intentions of it really from the beginning. It helped his clarity there, but actually move forward this idea, because I think it is something that adds to the experience of our residents and fund it elsewhere.
Can I offer the Peterson-Eskim compromise? In that we do, we approve it as requested this evening, Chris, and we endeavor to fund it through the general fund or otherwise in the budget process. Because it needs to get expedited this evening to get it going.
Fair, fair enough.
And again, it's, I mean, it's a permissible use, and can get it out of this fund for the future. And again, I'm sure we can find a way to stick this to them and appropriately put it in the Board of Selectmen item or something like that.
Sure.
That's a little longer.
Yeah.
It's not $3,000. It said they have to keep a minimum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I hear you.
It's a bad connection. Okay, well, as long as, I'm more, I like the, I thought Sean was gonna say promote the Peterson-Eskim solution by he and I paying for it. Actually, if he wants to do that, okay. I bet.
You can if you want to. I'm not, I'm not gonna stop you from doing that, but.
What I think is neat about this project is it's a, really, it's a relatively small amount of money that I think will make a really big difference to our residents who enjoy our downtown and Terriffill's downtown. And I appreciate the conversation going forward to make sure that we're using the funds in the way that they were intended. It's also a small enough amount of money that I imagine, that if we were intentional about it, we could find, you know, businesses or residents who wanted to sponsor this kind of thing going forward, because it's quite visible.
Yeah.
To Chris's question earlier, since I have it in front of me. So this is something that came from Henry Ellsworth's will, and he died back in February 1950. So the original expenditures probably now can find him. But I can tell you that he donated $2,000 to the Forest Commission, and then the $3,000 to be held in perpetuity with the income expended by the Selectmen each year to beautify the main streets of the town or toward expenditures of the Town Plan Commission, directly from his will and his intent and purpose.
All right, so two, so 5K over 69 years is appreciated to $18,000. Mike, you probably played football with him, right? You remember him in high school.
He was a tough guy.
So we, okay, so I, I don't, I'm telling everyone. Okay, so let's, let's move forward.
Yeah, really good context. Is there a motion effective November 8th, 2021, to approve a, sorry, wrong one? To approve the use of funds from the Ellsworth Trust for the acquisition of holiday lights to beautify downtown Simsbury and Terriffill?
So moved. We all want to move that one.
Move on.
All in favor?
Again, I enthusiastically.
Great. Let's see if you're equally enthusiastic about item F, which is a supplemental appropriation request for emergency repairs needed at the Owens Brook Open Space Parcel. And I didn't know if Tom Roy, Maria, who wanted to start with this item?
Tom, would you like to take this one?
I, I, I think I'll take this one. So a few weeks back, just part of our routine operations, one of our WPCA employees realized that we had a significant slope failure of the banks along the Owens Brook Boulevard. A couple of large trees fell over, uprooted. And what ended up happening is we had about a 30, 35-foot tall slope, and all of the soil from that came down and actually blocked up the culvert, which carries Owens Brook Boulevard down to Hot Meadow Street. It's significant failure in terms of if it was left unrepaired, it would in short order start to affect the parking lot from the Meadowview Apartments. It could potentially undermine that area. So we began work this week. It's been a very visible project. We've had to remove a number of trees, most of which has been just an enormous amount of vines and invasive plants. We've been working with Tom Hazel, who I see on the call, Mike Glidden, to make sure that we had all of the necessary permits, because we are working along the stream channel. We actually had Marjorie Winters come out just to make sure she could see the work and understand what we were doing. She was actually, I think, impressed with the fact that there was just so many invasive plants out there that we were able to take down. As we've gone through the course of our work and getting a better picture of what we have out there, we're going to have to replace the entire length of the culvert. It's about 125 foot long. We're gonna then also reduce the height of the hill, I'm gonna call it up there, which is then gonna allow us to have gentler slopes, so we're not gonna have a safety issue in the future. Within the next two weeks, we're gonna have some bypass pumping that may also be visible to residents. But when this is all done, we're gonna be able to hopefully return that area back to kind of the meadow that it once was. We're gonna have a safe and functioning culvert. And I think actually the area is gonna look. Um, and I, I think actually the area is gonna look, um, improved quite a bit when, when we end up, uh, finishing up.
Other questions for Tom?
I thought there'd be more discussion after the, uh, Christmas lights.
Right. So Tom, and this is not to, not to question, uh, staff, but this is all within your team's capabilities and equipment and all?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're in the lead on it right now. We, we did, um, work very closely, like I said, with planning, we sized the pipes appropriately. Uh, and we are using on-call, um, contracts that we have with both, uh, a tree service and an excavation contractor. The excavator required is bigger than anything we own.
Okay.
I have one quick question. With the num- the, the money, would it normally come out of capital reserves for something like this?
Um, I'll start and then if Amy wants to add anything, I think now that we do have a capital reserve. Um, and that's a really good place for us to, to take, uh, the funds from, just because this was an emergency situation and this is an emergency capital repair. Um, you know, prior to having the capital reserve, I suspect it would have been, you know, a supplemental appropriation and perhaps either through year-end savings or maybe, you know, a general fund, fund balance transfer at some point during, uh, mid-year or year-end is most likely how it would have been funded. Um, but again, given the capital nature of the repair work and the emergency repair work, um, that seems to be a logical, um, place for us to ask for the funds for. I don't know, Amy, if there's anything you wanna add to that?
No, I think that's, that pretty much covers it.
I will add, Eric, that, uh, through the years, that used to be much more of a field or swamp area. And obviously with the size of the trees you're cutting down, it's been a number of years. So, uh, that's a good indication of how, uh, uh, the town is growing, but also that areas fill in with, uh, growth and can, it can take over.
And I was, I was impressed, I was saying, Mike, I, uh, excuse me, Tom, I was impressed with the, the, uh, the archway of the culvert. You know, it's like almost a hidden, uh, you know, it's a hidden gem there of, 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 um, craftsmanship. So, uh, hopefully they can replace that, uh, and, and, uh, and bring it back to that, uh, I think that attractive look. So.
What we're actually gonna do, Chris, just because you wanna save that look, we're gonna build the new culvert is gonna be just to the north of the old culvert. So when it's done, you're still gonna see that old culvert. We're gonna leave that in place. So visually it's gonna look the same, but we're gonna have a, a separate pipe that's gonna do all of the, uh, flow conveyance.
Understood.
That's neat. Is there a motion effective November eighth, twenty twenty one to approve a supplemental appropriation for the Owens Brook Open Space Parcel Emergency Repairs in the amount of sixty thousand dollars? And to recommend to the Board of Finance, use of funds from the capital reserve to fund this work?
No move.
Second.
Is there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Um, item G is, um, the Firetown Road and Barn Door Hills Road Bridges Over Bissell Brook Grant Agreement. This is a grant that the town applied for, I believe, back in twenty eighteen to rehabilitate these two local bridges. The, um, grant requires a fifty percent local match, which was previously budgeted, uh, several budget cycles ago. Um, I just wanted to, I thought I'd start with you, Maria, if there's anything you wanted to add.
Um, just that this particular, um, grant agreement is being requested by the state. Um, Bob has had an opportunity to review it. Um, and then as you mentioned, um, there is a local match that's required, um, but that was appropriated in previous, um, previous budget years. And then Jeff, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add to that? Oh, Jeff, you might be on you. Oh, are you there? Oh, it looks like Jeff might be having difficulty.
Were there any questions from any board members on this item? Okay. Is there a motion effective November eighth, twenty twenty one to accept the local bridge program grant in the amount of four hundred, two thousand, five hundred dollars and authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute all the documents related to the state municipal grant agreement?
No move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Um, item H, this is a, um, proposed, uh, public gathering permit, uh, for a memorial ceremony to honor, uh, former Simsbury resident and veteran Dan Crowley, who passed away earlier this year. Um, really a very special opportunity for the community to come together, uh, to remember and celebrate the life of Mr. Crowley, who was one of the last, um, survivors of the Battle of the Ton during World War Two. And I wanted to, um, turn it over to any member of the, um, Public Gathering Committee to see if there's anything you wanted to add before I open up for questions.
Um, no, uh, I'm just here to represent for Missy Januno. She's, uh, unavailable due to a conflict. Um, due to the size and the scope and the expected, um, attendance to such a ceremony. Um, the Performing Arts Center would like to host that, um, that ceremony for, uh, Mr. Crowley. So if there's any specific questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to.
Other questions for Tom?
I think it's the least we could do as a community.
Yeah.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah, anybody that, uh, that doesn't know Mr. Crowley's story oughta, oughta talk to, to some folks that have heard it or otherwise, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a motion effective November eighth, twenty twenty one to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center? And to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the memorial ceremony at the PAC?
No move that.
I'll second it with sincere thanks for everything Mr. Crowley did.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Thank you to all who, um, were part of making this possible. Um, and item I is our, uh, proposed short-term rental ordinance. Um, earlier this evening, we had a, a public hearing regarding an ordinance that would regulate the market for short-term rentals by putting in place a permitting process for homeowners who list their houses on sites such as Airbnb. Um, my thanks to, uh, Jackie and Chris, who served on the work group to put this together, uh, along with, um, members of other boards and commissions. This was a, a multi-year process. Um, I thought it would be helpful to, um, go around and each of us could either, if we have, um, um, thoughts or reflections or questions, we could bring those up. And then we could see if we were comfortable either moving forward or, or tabling this to, uh, another day. Um, Chris or Jackie, can I start with you?
Jackie. But you, maybe you'll say enough that, uh, people don't have to listen to me.
Please do, Jackie.
Um, I'll start way back with, uh, my time on zoning before Board of Selectmen. Zoning asked us for this ordinance. Um, so Mike Liddon, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't wanna say this wrong. But our zoning regulations are permitted. And if it's not in our zoning, is that wrong?
Zoning, we have, uh, permissive, permissive regs.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So a short-term rental is not permitted in our zoning regulations. So the whole reason of creating this ordinance is yes, to allow it, but also to make the framework around it. So we have short-term rentals in Simsbury right now, and I don't know if the public is aware of that. Um, so the whole reason to do this ordinance was to put a framework and there is a limit. As one of, um, the public had mentioned, we do have limits on how long the owner could rent it for. We have safety items in there. Um, there's a lot to this ordinance, a lot of detail. And again, we already have these short-term rentals in Simsbury. So now we would like them to be safe. And I guess I'll start there. I don't know if you have, if everybody has questions or Chris, do you wanna go from there?
Yeah. So just, just piggybacking on what Jackie said. Um, you know, I, the, the, the well-intentioned comments of, that were received, uh, in public. Uh, the, uh, public forum earlier, um, you, you know, I'd ask, I'd ask though, many of those folks who, who, who wrote in with thoughts and also others who, um, who may not be familiar, take a look through the ordinance. Much of, many of your concerns are addressed in the ordinance. And if they're not outright addressed in the ordinance, I'd be hard pressed to fi- figure out a way that many of your concerns could actually work with the ordinance when a number of the components are added together and utilized as a, as tools to govern a responsible experience. And the, so please, folks, read the ordinance and see if many of your concerns are, you know, there's not gonna be any RVs parked on anyone's property. Okay. I can, I can, uh, there wa- it's not gonna be any investment. It's not gonna be zombie properties by outside investors, basically. Look what ownership is required. So please, folks, read the ordinance and then, and then, um, I see, I think that you'll, you'll see that as, as a group, uh, I want, and I wanna make sure we highlight, uh, Bruce, Bruce Elliott, Ron Jodis and, uh, uh, Liz Peterson's, um, partnership, time, effort, thoughts, uh, frustrations. Um, that went into this, uh, it's an imperfect, you know, as many ordinances are, there, there, there's going to be imperfections. Uh, but there, because it's, I said before, as an ordinance, it allows for flexibility and pliability to meet the, the needs as they arrive. You know, we don't, I, you know, the towns, the, the, the cities out there, I don't think we have a problem with short-term resident, uh, uh, re- rentals yet. Um, and one of our, one of, so we don't need to, so the, the concern that we should be following towns that are outlawing that. I think by and large, the towns that outlawed them are having significant problems. I don't think we're quite there yet, but because we have an ordinance, we can adapt and make sure that we address, um, the, the unforeseen. So what the, it's a fine balance, folks. Um, it is my charge to the group, and I'll end here, my charge to the group was not to legislate to one particular property. That's not what we were trying to solve for. We were trying to take the experience of many people and create a holistic vehicle from which we could, we could move forward and look at the responsible safe potential renting and allow people who were, but it's, and allow people who are homeowners to do, to give them the opportunity to utilize their home in a certain way. But within the boundaries, I think of something that is respectful and, uh, requires stewardship and a high level of responsibility. And I don't think we will be getting into, uh, some of the concerns that people, um, have voiced earlier. Um, so again, thanks for the group, uh, and certainly this is not something that was one of your comments. This is not something that came out of the blue. This is, I think, the more, the more longer painful work on ordinances that we've had. It's been well over a year. So I apologize for the folks who didn't know about it. But the meetings were certainly noticed and the conversation was occurring. So.
Yeah.
I'll stop there. I'll open it up.
And just to add to that, I, I included this item for, you know, many, many occasions in my first selectmen's report. Um, to, you know, when I was listening to the comments today, I think that there was a disconnect. And I think part of, a big part of that is on us from a, a communications perspective. And I, I heard loud and clear the concerns that some residents have around not wanting strangers in your neighborhood or excess traffic or noise. Um, but as was pointed out earlier, is these are things that are, are happening today, even though it's technically not allowed. And what this ordinance is gonna allow us to do is it's actually gonna allow us to stop the people who are doing this badly, who are renting their house to partiers, um, or who, who have people that are parking in inappropriate places. Whereas right now, we don't have the teeth to be able to do that. And the only other thing I would add is I think that this is a reasonable compromise between people who feel like this is my property, this is my house, I should be able to do what I want with it versus neighbors who are concerned about the quality of their neighborhoods. And I think this is meeting them in the middle. I think the vast, vast, vast majority of people who are currently renting their houses on short-term sites are doing it responsibly and it's, and it's working well. And if you're a neighbor, you might not even know what's happening. But we do know that there have been some problems and this ordinance is gonna really allow us to, to crack down on that. So that, that's why, um, I'm inclined to support this.
Um, Eric, I took a couple of calls today and, uh, when I talked to these folks, um, none of them realized that this was, uh, facilitating having these. It was more to build a framework for them to operate within. Um, and, and that is the way I'm viewing this. Because if we do nothing, to very honestly, I believe we will have similar problems to what we've had in the past. And if we don't somehow manage this, although I am concerned about overreach and everything else on the form, on the half, on the behest of government. Um, there should be some controls to protect everybody else in the neighborhood. Um, and when I explained that, um, they, they did take a different, they walked away with a different understanding. Um, I'm, I'm inclined to support this. Um, and as an ordinance, we can then modify it down the road if things evolve and change, as I'm sure they will. So, uh, unless I hear something dramatically different, I am prepared to support this.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Uh, Ja- uh, Wendy.
Wendy, so the first thing I thought of when I hear this is, uh, I could have my family stay up the street if somebody has a short-term rental, so they don't have to stay with me. And like people could be close family, you know, and rent. That was something. So if you think of it like that, it gives you more of an opportunity. Um, a couple of things that I just wanted to point out to talk about is, um, my big question, and maybe Mike can answer this, is why does it have to have a kitchen?
So, um, we followed our, our regulations for, uh, accessory dwelling units. It's making sure you have all the components of a living space, meaning you have sanitary facilities, a bedroom and a kitchen. So it's, so it's a house, basically. Um, otherwise the, the concern is like, you know, you, you get into these stages where they're creating some very unsafe situations where people unknowingly signing leases and showing up expecting I'm renting a house or something like that. And it's not that. It's Mike Liddon's trailer in his backyard that you're renting. Cause people are, unfortunately, it's, it's kind of the stories we're hearing, what people are doing in other parts of the country. And it's not coming to our, our neighborhood at this point. However, you know, the, the framework here is what like kind of Eric said earlier. It, it creates a safe situation for people that are going into these rental situations. Cause you have, you know, an enforcement process where the building official, my office, we're gonna go out and inspect there. And when they apply for a permit and then, you know, as an annual basis, when we have renewals. Does that answer?
Not really, but I'll, I'll take it that there, there's a reason there's a kitchen involved. Um, another point I just wanted to make is, you, you know, the ADU opt-out, opt-in is coming, which would change. This is based on the current ADUs. So would we relook at this again if things changed, you know, in that sphere? If it impacted, if it impacts this somewhat?
So the ADU opt-out, I think a lot of that applies to the design standards for the ADUs. Um, the use, the, the ADU, the actually the zoning reorg bill, and, uh, still permits communities to regulate the use of ADUs for short-term rental purposes. So we'll still have teeth regardless of what the zoning commission recommends on regulating the use of a, a ADU for short-term rental purposes. Um, the only thing maybe that would be different is if we were to opt out would be the parking section. Cause, cause the zoning reorg bill has some very specific language regarding, uh, reduction of parking requirements versus this current or, coordinate ordinance as proposed mirrors really the zoning regulations as it relates to, to providing, uh, all-street parking, you know, that's a hundred and eighty square feet, et cetera. And also this is saying that there's no on-street parking. It's permitted if you're operating a, uh, a short-term rental out of the house.
Okay. Okay. Um, so the, the other question I had that was, we talked about, and I don't know if this happened or not, but removing a sound um, thing.
Noise. Noise.
The noise ordinance, which I don't feel we should take out. I, 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 I just thought that might, should be in there.
Yeah, there were two related bullets. One was more of a general comment around not having excess noise. And then another bullet specified the decibels. I guess I, if we took anything out, it was perhaps specifying. I guess I, if we took anything out, it was perhaps specifying the decibels, because we really have no specific way of enforcing that. But I would very much want to keep in there that we do not want these properties to have excess noise.
Okay, I I wasn't, I I must have missed both of them, but just that there is a noise or line item in there.
Yeah, Eric, if it's okay, I could just quickly screenshot and just, sure. So earlier today, um and and I apologize for the the lateness of this thought. Um I did share, sorry, I'm just gonna pull my screen quickly here. Um I did share a little bit of additional feedback that um staff had, just again, sort of upon a final um a final look at this. And um what we would suggest under conduct is changing the word excessive noise to unreasonable noise. Um that being, uh there is a state statute um in regards to unreasonable noise. Um so the chief did think that mirroring that language in state statute, using the term unreasonable as opposed to excessive, just might make a little, a little more sense. Um but the piece about the decibel reading, um and again, I I apologize for this, I think I might have mentioned it very, very early on in the process. From a staff perspective, that's incredibly um difficult to enforce. Um some folks, um such as Mike and and myself, and we've worked in other communities. At one point in time, you know, they had that type of in ordinance, if you will, um with the equipment, which is very difficult to enforce, very difficult to measure. Oftentimes, um you know, a community will just abandon it. Uh we don't actually uh have the the equipment currently to do so. So if we really did want to pursue this, we would have to, you know, purchase some equipment. Um and then speaking with the chief as well, again, it was sort of a, and we apologize again that we didn't sort of catch this sooner, but the decibel reading, we do think would be very difficult to enforce. Um but understand, you know, the importance of wanting to make sure that the property, you know, wasn't, you know, causing unreasonable, unreasonable noise.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And Maria, Maria, just to tie in with that, the, we've already stated, um because not everybody's familiar with this ordinance, but we've already stated that you, there's not to be parties. So that's, we're trying to cover this there too, correct?
Yeah, that's clearly, I, we, it can't be marketed. And essentially, if you're, if you're, if a party's going to resolve out of the property being marketed uh with with language or an intent for essentially commercial use, and that's clearly something that we are also trying to legis- that is, I'll use the term legislate. Um and you've got, you've got cars, only a, only, you can only have a number, unless they're, unless they'd really get into system and then to go rent a huge bus uh to bring all their partiers there, you know, you've got cars in in accordance with um the number of bedrooms. You know, it's access to kitchen, it's not necessarily kitchen, it's accessible, you know, we're really trying to create and it a a level of accountability for the for the experience. And and I think also, um you know, Wendy, your 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 story, your 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 uh your example, you know, had this not been in place, yeah, you could, you could, you could stuff your your relatives that you don't want to see in your house up the road. But they would be put into a place that could be subterranean with no, um you know, with that, with no means of egress. So we're, we're at least keeping them safe as ma- as much as you may not want them to be. So the uh with this, with this ordinance. And that mean, again, I hope people see the spirit and the honor of this is, is not taking away the ability for people to, again, it's a work in progress. Mike, thank you for, you know, not taking people away to people's, the ability to use their property in a, in a, in a responsible um safe way and being true custodians and steward of their of their neighbors. But all, but at the same time, um really limiting the potential for all these things, these scenarios, which are the horror stories. And um I think that this guide, the this ordinance is far stricter than any ordinance or any guidelines you're gonna see outlined on um the commercial sites like Airbnb and HomeAware, whichever it is. The guidelines that they put in there for core requirements that they suggest their advertisers put, you know, create for uh or or comply to. So we're going well beyond what is, what is, what is out there um being marketed by those sites.
Well, you guys did a really good job going through all this and I think it was a lot of work to do, so thank you.
So sta- town staff.
I was just gonna say, Tom Fitzgerald, Mike Liddon, Henry Miga, thank you guys. Wow, really, we had so many meetings, thanks.
And Jeff. So.
All right.
Sean.
Sean eh um had to drop for a commitment. Um but um, hold on, let me um, I'll give him the last word. Um he says that I support individual property rights and therefore support the right of an owner to do what they see fit with their property. Um this ordinance supports that and provides common sense structure. Thank you uh for Jackie and Chris for your work.
Thanks.
Um that's from Sean, you have to thank me. Um I'm hearing consensus about uh moving forward tonight, so let me just read the motion. Um is there a motion effective November eighth, twenty twenty one to adopt the proposed short term rental ordinance as presented, which will be uh effective twenty one days after publication in a newspaper, having circulation within the town of Sims Berry? And also to authorize a summary of the adopted ordinance be published?
I'll move that, Eric.
There's Mike and then um Jackie, was that a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you all for your work on this.
Lot of work.
Um finally, item J is the National Opioid Settlement Opt-In. In uh this past July, the Connecticut Attorney General announced a settlement agreement in a suit that was brought by several states against three drug companies. In order for Sims Berry to receive some of the dollars from this settlement, our board needs to opt in. And this money um would be used locally for things like opioid prevention, treatment and recovery work. I wanted to see uh if there were any questions on this item. Anything you wanted to add, Maria?
I don't think so. Melissa or Bob?
I don't think so. Um just that we will need to affirmatively opt in, so this is something that we will, you know, if you take, um if you support opting in, that's something we have to affirmatively do, which um of course, if you vote in favor, we will do that to make sure that we can um take advantage of the opportunity.
Hmm, I'd just add that the use of the funds is restricted by the settlement agreement itself, which I have shared, but there's, I I see it as very little downside to the town to opt in. It'll create some funding for a serious social issue that you otherwise wouldn't have and um um the alternative is to, for the town to bring its own suit, which of course is not a viable alternative.
You're not up for the task, Bob? All right. Um are there other questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there a motion uh uh November eighth, twenty twenty one to opt in to the National Opioid Settlement? And to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola or her designee to execute and submit all the required documentation?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um moving on to the review of minutes uh from our regular meeting on October thirteenth. How'd they look? Okay, then they'll stand. Are there selectman liaison and subcommittee reports?
I I just want to say um thank you to the Aging and Disability Commission for the trunk or treat that they put on um on a really cold and rainy night, and it was really nice to see the people that came to that.
Hey, thanks, Wendy.
Um, oh, man, oh, uh I I we, the the culture park and rec, we had a um scheduling conflict um for the initial one, it was rescheduled, and then I had a conflict, so I didn't attend it. Uh I, there is, there is, it's the the last meeting um just a few days ago. Um I would encourage anybody to to watch the the um the video. Uh it's it's good, so as we, I, these these year end reports that Tom gives out specifically about usage from the seasonality of of especially of the complex and all, I think it's super interesting and as we transition into the the um the coming winter months. But, you know, by and large, uh uh again, overwhelmingly um positive. Um you know, a significant up uptick in usage of the farms complex, specifically golf, so um and and success, initial success with the uh the restaurant as well, the restaurant vendor as well. And that's another thing, too, I remind residents uh that we do have a restaurant uh in town, a new new restaurant in town up at the at the farms. And if you have an opportunity to be a um frequent them, be a patron.
Great, thanks, Chris. Any other committee updates? Okay. Uh anything on our communication anyone wanted to raise? Um I just wanted to remind everybody that our next meeting in uh November um will be in person and hybrid. Um Maria, do we know what, is that gonna be at the library for sure? Do we know yet?
Yeah, we're looking at the library, uh the Friends Program Room most likely holding that meeting, just again, to give us a bit more space.
Okay. But the owl will be there for anybody who wants or needs to participate remotely. Um and I think it'll be good for us to um be together at our um final meeting as a board. Okay.
Just, I want, one, one, one interesting, I think, communications uh folks, it just, I think, it's super interesting, you should read the back of the packet uh letter from Tom Taberisky to the town about the the CT Bobcat program, which I think is, which is interesting. And uh I think one of the components of it is that um is regularly reporting on um the results that come from that study now that we're uh we're part of it, so.
Yes, it's it's a good read, and we discussed with the Open Space Committee uh this past week, and um yeah, it's interesting. All right.
I I would agree with uh Chris's points. I know another town that did this, and it's amazing information. That's pretty cool.
Great. Is there a motion uh to adjourn to executive session to discuss two items? Item A is a discussion on a possible purchase of land at fifty six Walk It Road. We'd be joined by Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Bob DiCrescenzo and Tom Roy. And item B is a discussion um of a a request for approval of assignment of the uh ISCC uh ground lease that's at the skating center. And we would be joined by all of the same people uh as above, with the exception of Tom Roy.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.